We have a fairly, we think we've attended tonight, but we'll start off by asking to approve the supervisors' meeting minutes of February 18 and March 5. Do I hear such a motion?
Sure.
I have a second minute. All right. Hold on just a second. Hi. Okay, we have three announcements. Lisa, would you start off? Please with your report.
Sure. I wanted to state that the 2012 audit is done. It's on the township website. I am in the process of collecting data from other townships in Chester County and Delaware County on how they make sure that all contractors are paying their income tax. I've received a few answers, and I also have a township manager's meeting next week, so I'll see if I can get more information then. And to follow up on that, we had a special meeting on earning income tax on March 5, just so people could ask questions. And after the meeting, I sent information around, and I was surprised that there were quite a few residents who had no idea we had an earning income tax. The core boring tests were done on Marshall Bridge Road for the road bank erosion. The results are due this week, so once we get them, then we'll be able to determine what our next step is going to be. The Environmental Advisory Commission and the Roadmaster are working together on inspecting all of the stream banks so that we can try to prevent future road bank erosion. That's it.
Okay, good. So, do you have something?
Yes, thank you. I have actually three discs that I discovered that I left. The contents of one of them, so I'm going to give to the township tonight two, followed up by one copy of the Regional Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted in August 2000. So, the Regional Planning Commission, the commission is going to begin to review and revise a comprehensive plan in the next month or so. It's going to take a little while to do, obviously, but I wanted the township to have a copy. This was provided by the County Planning Commission. And there are three copies for each of the members' organizations that are part of the Regional Planning Commission. So, passing this down. The third one should be forthcoming very shortly.
And this is the Regional Planning Commission Comprehensive Plan for the year 2000?
Correct.
You do have a hard copy of that?
You do. It'd be very easy for anybody who wants to see it, because it's electronic now. We can duplicate copies very quickly and very easily for anybody that wants to look at it. You don't have to say that the page is for a large document.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have something?
Yeah, Fire Board meeting. You can't attend the fire companies looking for volunteers, including junior firemen, if anybody's interested, or your kids are interested in becoming a fireman.
They need new blood, and they need lots of it. Okay, Lisa, if you would, give us the year-end financial presentation.
I think we're okay. Try it once.
This is the Kent Township balance sheet. With the quarterly reports, we didn't have the balance sheet. We wanted to put this up. We included the, all of the property, buildings, equipment, vehicles, so you can see what our fixed assets are as of the year end. So, our current assets are $11,582,493. Our fixed assets are $60,578,494. And then we have the loan to the sewer fund, which is $821,240, for a total assets of In 2012, the following decisions were made. The township finances were separated into separate funds: library fund, state fund, open space fund, general fund. And then we had escrow and a separate account for the Lilly project. Any transactions residing in the general fund that belonged to one of the special funds were moved to that special fund. With the help of our auditor, the special fund beginning balances were calculated. And today, I'm going to discuss the revenues and expenditures for each of those funds. The general fund, the revenues were 3.4, they were 2% higher than 2011, 9% higher than the budget. And the expenditures were 4% greater than 2011 and 2% less than budget. So, the net income was $360,000, which is 11% less than 2011. And the 2012 budget was $8.6. Tax and service fees accounted for 87% of the total revenue for 2012. Roads, fire, and emergency services, office, and wages accounted for 62% of total expenditures The major revenue items, taxes were 80% of the total revenue, and they were 9% higher than in 2011, 9% higher than the budget. The service fee revenue was up considerably due to conditional use fees that we received and reimbursements for subdivisions. The major expense items, nine major categories constitute 86% of township expenses, which roads, fire, emergency services, office, wages, general government, engineering, police, maintenance garage, and quarterly contributions. The general fund expenditures were the same as in 2011, 2% less than the budget. This is a listing of all other expenses, which include, you can see, the township building, permits, capital fund, planning and zoning, hydrants, et cetera. All other expenditures represent 14% of the total expenditures in 2012. So, at the beginning of the year, the general fund had $9.5 million. We had $821,240, which was the loan to the sewer fund. Then, our revenues were $3.4 million. Our expenditures were $3,78, and our ending balance is $9,050. The ending balance of the general fund is 4.8% lower than the beginning balance due to the sewer loan. And we'll begin repaying the sewer loan at a minimum of $100,000 this year. It may be more, depending on if we get connection fees in. And the higher sewer fund revenue will allow us, like I said, to pay it back faster if we get more connection fees in from development. Moving on, does anybody have any questions? Well, we're done with them. The next is the special funds: the sewer, the open space, the library tax, and the state fund. This is the sewer fund. The revenues for the first 12 months was $769,000. It was 28% less than 2011 and 35% less than budget. The fees are based on usage, so if people use a lot of water, then we're going to receive more fees, but we're also going to pay more fees out to the borough. The expenses totaled $634,000, which was 1% lower than 2011 and 14% lower than budget. The two largest expenses are the residential and industrial fees that we paid to the borough. Our net was $135,000, which is 69% less than 2011 and 70% less than budget, and that was based on usage fees. We broke out the sewer revenue and the pumping stations. The pumping stations were a large expense. You can see that in 2012, our pumping stations, we spent 600, well, we spent $42,000, but then we spent $587,000 on common expenses. Yes.
What is the connection fee that you charge per EDU?
$8,000.
And do you have a maximum capacity that you can pump to the borough's private facility? What is that?
It's $325,000 gallons per day.
And at what percent of that capacity are you working out?
About 50.
Thank you.
We will be selling a total of 150 EDUs this year at $8,000 each.
Lisa, back on the previous slide, the township actually netted positively from our sewer operation.
Yes, but that's after, we have, the sewer fund owes the general fund $821,000 because the township accountant went back 12 years through sewer fund and calculated how much has been spent out of the general fund for sewer, so we are repaying that. But generally, we should net in sewer fund.
As from those expenses last year, we did net, but we're in 30 blocks now.
Right. And this year, we have, we're doing the sewer extensions for Creek Road and Five Point, and that's going to cost us about $800,000.
To further on that point, your accounting is what's called cash flow accounting, so this is revenues in and revenues out.
Right.
Commercial businesses use accrual accounting, which, because you have capital elements, the new construction you mentioned, that would be amortized over time, and it would show a more even relationship that residents might expect if you, if you're not allowed to use that accounting, depending if it requires cash flow accounting. But that's the reason why there will always be a difference between the revenues, you know, the inflows and outflows, because its cash basis rather than a accrual basis.
That's right. It's spent at different times. But because of the high connection fees that we'll receive this year, the sewer fund will be able to cover those extensions. And in addition to the 150 that we're going to receive this year, all the people that live along those extensions will be connecting next year. So, the beginning balance in January was negative $767,000. And then we had the loan for $821,000 from the general fund. We had revenues of $768,000 and expenditures of $633,000, so our balance is $189,314. As I said, that we made the loan as the township accountant recommended, and we'll be able to pay it back at a minimum of $100,000 per year. This is the open space fund. The revenues from tax, open space tax money this year was $985,000. Part of that, $778,000 was from the open space tax. $201,000 was from fee and lieu, which is the fee that developers pay in lieu of providing open space. Our expenses totaled $436,000. That was for the purchase of two evens. And our net income was $549,000. So, at the beginning of the year, the open space fund was 1.783. Our revenues were $984,000. Our expenditures were $436,000, and our ending balance was $2.332. So, the open space fund grew 31% last year. This is the library fund. Our revenues were $151,000. That was all from tax collections. The tax collections were a little lower than budget due to delinquencies. The expenses totaled $163,000, and that was what we distributed to the library. The ending fund balance was $1,326. At the beginning of the year, we had $13,231, and that's why we distributed more than we received, because we're trying to distribute everything we received to the library. So, our ending balance was $1,326. This is the state fund. The revenues were $226,000, which is 7% greater than 2011. The state usually increases our liquid fuels every year by about 70%. The expenses were $230,000. They consisted of paving and lawn paving. And the beginning balance was $4,711. The revenues were $226,000, and the expenditures were $230,000, which less than $822. In 2013, we're revising the chart of accounts in order to simplify them and have greater clarity. We're going to segment the residential sewer fees by pumping stations, so we'll be able to, for the quarterly report for 2013, be able to see how much of the residential fees we pay and commercial fees for each pumping station. And right now, we're working on developing a capital fund with the Business Advisory We have a draft right now, and we're working on, it includes roads, buildings, equipment, MS4, bridge repairs. And so, we're working on creating a sinking fund with that. And then, in 2013, I started budgeting quarterly, which the quarterly reports will show that. Any questions?
Do you have a figure or estimate for what will be, the money's needed to get the MS4 compliant?
Yes, for 2013, it's $15,000. I have on the capital fund, I budgeted out 10, I think eight years for the MS4, which is about $10,000 a year. Does everybody know what MS4 is? Stormwater management.
This is not a question, but it looks like you're making significant progress structuring your fund, and so the residents can understand what's going on.
We are.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And Bill LaBrosse, and your help is tremendous. He's our Business Advisory Committee.
Any more questions? Lisa, that was a wonderful job. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Bill.
We received from the Planning Commission this month an analysis and a recommendation concerning a demolition permit, which is following the procedures outlined in our Procedures for granting a demolition permit. The Planning Commission has recommended to the supervisors that we delay a decision on the demolition permit for 90 days. That is the maximum that they can ask us to delay. And we have pondered the idea, and I think we have some thoughts on it. Bob, I think you have something to say on that.
I move that we table this until our April meeting, which we tab out to granting a one-month extension.
Do you second that motion to table?
I prefer the 90 days.
No, I will second the motion on the table. Is there any questions about tabling the motion? Not the motion itself, but this is to table the motion.
What is the demolition of?
It's the demolition of three employee buildings at 4 Route 1.
They're at the old 52 North.
At the end of, on the right side. Now, the 52 North has been changed.
Been in danger for a while.
They've been, oh, they're in there for a while, and I understand to rehab them would be a very, very heavy expense. Everybody wants to live in them because of the traffic.
My name is Barbara Holmes. I come from, I took up some township, from Historic Committee. I was asked to come here to this meeting to speak on this particular issue. I have quite a bit of experience in historic preservation. I am the person that restored the forge and created the Historic District of Fairville. I had my business in there for about 30 years. I've also done a lot of other work. I am now certified by the State of Pennsylvania, by the Museum Historic Commission, to certify historic structures. My feeling, and I've done a little bit of research on this, is that these structures are really not historic.
Excuse me, Barbara, I have to interrupt you. The issue on the table at the moment for discussion only is the motion to table the issue, not to discuss the issue. The discussion of the issue will be probably next month.
My idea is that I see no reason they should not be pulled down.
Okay. Very nicely.
We will do that.
Yes, thank you very much. John?
Could Bob or any of the supervisors explain what you expect might happen during this 30-day delay?
We felt that the issue is probably controversial. There are a lot of folks that would like to see those three buildings restored. And there's, and we were anxious to make sure that those people had enough time to marshal an argument to present to us.
So, during that period, you can receive?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be happy to hear.
Positions or arguments?
Absolutely, yes.
Or at next month's meeting?
I'm sorry?
Or at next month's?
Or at next month's meeting.
Or, yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Thanks.
In the back.
Mike, Karen Marshall. I just want to clarify, because I was asked by the president of the Chester County Star Preservation Network to read a letter on his behalf tonight. So, to clarify what the motion is, should I, should I inform Mr. Knapp that we'll be discussing this next month, that he should send this to the board of supervisors, or would you like to hear the letter from your county's organization, which represents the historic preservation?
He would prefer to wait and make your presentation. It would go into the record at that time, and that would, I hope, make you comfortable.
It's just that he's not here, Mike, so I want to make sure.
And you can certainly read it if he's not here next month as well.
Okay, so I can inform him that it was tabled?
Yes.
Well, I'll wait for the end of the motion.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Kim?
Oh, Planning Commission. Just a question clarification. Do we have the ability to table a decision by the way the ordinance is written? It requires a decision within 30 days after the Planning Commission makes a decision. If you're tabling it till your next meeting, which is beyond 30 days from when we made the motion, does that have any problems? I mean, have you checked your motion with legal counsel to see that there won't be any ramifications from it?
I thought it was a 90-day window, but you're saying it's 30.
Well, I think what the ordinance states is that the Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation within 30 days of the application for the demolition, at which time, we then make a recommendation for either a delay or an approval of the demolition so that the board of supervisors can direct the building officer to, or the zoning officer to issue the permit. And I think what the ordinance says is that, I'm not sure if it's up to 90 days or 90 days for a Class 1 structure. And one of the reasons I was asking Mary Ann Rossi at the Planning Commission meeting about the difference between Class 2 and Class 1, and whether they thought it was Class 1, is because a Class 2 is a 60-day delay, and a Class 1 is a 90-day delay. I'm just not sure you have the latitude to make the motion, and that's the only reason I'm asking the question. Are you confident that you have that ability? And does Longwood, since you're the party to do this as well, agree?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. My name is Mary Ann Rossi. I represent Longwood Gardens. I believe that the Planning Commission is timely acted within the 30 days. I certainly, on behalf of Longwood, have no objection to the motion. I believe that this board has 90 days from the Planning Commission's recommendation, and if you want to table it in the midst of that, but overall, I believe you have 90 days. So, I don't, I don't see, I think it's a very astute question, but I don't see a downside to tabling it, because I think you have the 90 days.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more thing, Mike.
All right.
While we're sort of having this discussion here, one of the purposes of the delay is for the Planning Commission to have an opportunity to engage the applicant for alternative uses. Would you be open to a meeting between ourselves and our consultants?
Jim, that's not part of this motion, please. I'm going to have to ask you.
She said yes.
Bill?
Yes. Mr. Allen, does this presume that the supervisors think that Longwood would be interested in historic restoration? It's on their properties, their buildings, are they interested in this?
I can't answer that question, Bill. The purpose of this is to merely extend the comment period, if you will, 30 days. I have no bias one way or the other about the outcome of it, and that's the only purpose that we have in mind. Okay? Any other questions?
Mike, let me see if I can understand, particularly focusing on the dialogue between Mary Ann and Jim. Are we postponing by 30 days the decision to act upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission? Or are we asking for, or thinking, I should say, taking a 30-day extension, which we could take up to 90 days if Mary Ann is correct? Which one is it?
It's the latter.
It's the latter. So, it's clear we're not just postponing the decision upon the recommendation, we're taking?
The Planning Commission has not made a recommendation other than statutory maximum.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to new business. All right, hold on just a second. Okay, we've moved to new business. Longwood Gardens demolition permit, we have finished. The audio business is there. Want to explain what they do, first?
The Kent Township Communications Committee has been working on The Kennet Township Communications Committee has been working on upgrades to this room for the audio visual. Couple of the members are here right now, a few others. John Gager's here, and Phil Blachman, and Bob McMillan, happy to chat. And they're right. So they put out the bid, and it seems that the lowest bidder is Sanaro. Sanaro is the company who originally put this system in. And there's a summary in the back that explains what would be done. And the new, I'll just explain what the new item would be. It would be audio recording, improved document station with a new document camera, which, if I'm correct, will be over here, and it will point down and read the large documents and project them. Newer, higher-resolution LCD projector, a manual projection screen. It'll have a wall-mounted control. There'll be two areas that you can input your laptop. And then there'll be rack-mounted PCs and video recording, which is something that supervisors need to decide if they want to do audio and video.
And you said the PC is an option, too?
Okay.
And that's not recommended at this time?
Just the video.
And the supervisors have to decide on the video option?
Yeah. I just want to make one statement before you make your motion on the video, given my opinion, I guess. I have quite a few residents who think that the way the county does the video is great because they put the video recording, they're recorded by the county and they're put on the laptop. A lot of residents would rather be recorded that way than by residents. So I think video is a good option.
I don't have that confidence. You all have that confidence?
The bid is twenty-seven thousand, forty-seven.
Do you have any comments on this?
Well, thank you. I do, I think that, I certainly have no problem going with Sanaro. I do think that it would be foolish to not take advantage of the video option at this time because I believe at some point, if we aren't doing it now, at some point in the near future, reasonable near future, we're going to, and to have to add it at a later time is going to be much more expensive, taking apart the system to add something to it at that point. I think that if the price were thirty thousand dollars, it's nothing, it's thirty-six hundred dollars. It's considerably less expensive to add the video now, I think, than it would be in the future. And we'll have it available to do just exactly as Lisa was suggesting. We can then begin to provide the communications to the community that the community has begun to expect. So I'll make the motion that we adopt the Sanaro total bid of twenty-seven eight ninety-two with an addition. I'm sorry?
You're wrong, oh, okay.
That's right.
With the addition of the video option of thirty-six forty-seven.
No, I think that's the wrong number. Twenty-eight includes everything.
Twenty-seven eight ninety-two includes everything.
So it's twenty-three four plus thirty-six?
Yeah, you want twenty-seven oh five seven.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I see, yeah, I see.
I'll second that.
Make sure you put the number in.
Two-seven oh five seven.
Two-seven oh five. Any discussions? Anybody have any comments on it?
Listen, I'm just, I'm just, planning commission, but also a public agency. Will the township record, will it consider the official recording of the meeting? I'm going to assume they have a statement. Would that preclude other recordings?
No.
No.
Probably not. I want to clarify that that wasn't...
We don't have that legal right to do that.
That's what I thought, okay.
John?
I support adding this video option. When we looked at the bids that came in, and I want to point out to everybody, we went through a, what you might call a formal public bid process for this additions, and the price range is pretty significant, so I think we did a smart thing. And the company that is very familiar with it, and we actually helped consult us on if the pieces put together came in as a bid. But that, that little piece, the video, was lower than what we expected for that option. So I support Soder's idea, it's a wise expenditure, additional thirty-six hundred.
Okay, good.
Bill?
Yes, I wanted to commend the entire group that worked on this because a considerable effort both from a technological point of view and cost containment point of view was put in place to use as much as possible the existing equipment that we have to add into it rather than replacing everything from one end to the other. And a lot of thought went into doing that as well as getting input from all the various user groups so that the system would best meet the all users' needs, with the question that you're now, the one question you're now discussing. This is township at its best, I think.
I think it would, and I don't know if this is included, but I think that podium over there is quite unstable. It would be nice to have a more stable podium with a microphone.
It's not in there.
We're going to have to bring it still.
I'm glad you brought it somewhere.
Hearing no other comments or laughter, I will move the question, all those in favor, on, aye? Okay.
Bill Shelton wants to speak on behalf of the safety committee.
Yes, Bill.
I have one item, like what I thought, to the shaky podium. Try not to knock it over. And I won't, or if I do, no one saw me. What I wanted to talk briefly about was a GPS mapping system changes that was put in place and is about to come live on April first. I think we all in the township have observed that heavy trucks regularly use our roads and often abuse our roads, and one cause of this problem is the heroics that people have when they have a GPS system. You know, it plots a course for them and they just, you know, here we go. And that's often used to find shortcuts or avoid heavy traffic. Well, and our chief had relayed to us at the safety committee a number of, well, one particular serious incident of a truck getting stuck and then having to back out of a very long road at night in bad weather and time of the road, and the roads were closed, a bad situation, and it's all unsafe. So the safety committee undertook a project to get the height, weight, length, and total road closure changes that exist on our fifty road, miles of roads, into the universal GPS mapping system. And, you know, none of us knew anything about this when we started. It started a year ago, and we've now achieved that. As I said, it's going to come live on April first, the maps are going to be available on April first. There's one company, it's called NAVTEQ, N-A-V-T-E-Q, that's the prominent company that actually owns the maps, that then licenses it to all the GPS manufacturers, device manufacturers, and end users. So they own the maps. So the trick was to get to them to update their maps, and they actively invite people to do that, but most of the updates aren't single things. You know, someone gets a new restaurant, one point of entry, there's an error, one error gets corrected. We were trying to make a wholesale change of road closures over a large area. Their system wasn't quite set up to do that, and from the kinds of questions and dialogue that I eventually could have when I finally reached a person, they weren't ready to do this. So we were opening a new area for them, that is to put road hazards into a GPS system so that a user will know in the future that if there's a low overpass, bridges, bridges being closed is something that their system will currently accept. Well, anyway, we worked kind of hard to identify where all the restrictions were. We used Roger's very good maps that he has, correlated that to the township's public map that we all use, and identified, again with Roger's help, all the various road restrictions, there were sixteen of them we found. And then we photographed all the signages so that we made sure that what we were going to be telling NAVTEQ exactly corresponded to what our signages were, that all this is going to work. In any event, NAVTEQ decided after we did all this work that they would have to send their camera truck out to run our roads to do their own navigational GPS, you know, whatever they do with their camera truck. And that has now happened. It took them over six months on their time line to do that. And as I said, they'll be available on the April first maps we're updating the devices. NAVTEQ cautions though that the individual companies that use our maps use these to varying degrees, so they may not, not every company may not put all these things in, but at least they'll be in the master map that everybody can use. I was going to bring my computer, but the weather was bad and for other reasons I didn't bring it, but I was going to demonstrate how this worked for the Chandler Mill Bridge closing because that will show on this new map starting April first that that road is closed. So a GPS device with the maps of that finish will no longer allow you to plot a course down Chandler Mill Road. That's going to be, I think, a big help to the people who live in that area who are particularly concerned about through traffic trying to get around. And that will remain closed until somebody, I don't know, Pendott or somebody, if eventually the bridge is rebuilt, to reopen this on the GPS map. So it's going to stay closed electronically as well as physically, as we know. This really puts Kennet Township at the cutting edge of a technology, and sometimes we get knocked as a township for being real old-fashioned, but nobody else has done this. I know that from the way NAVTEQ has responded to our changes and also the way their software works. And I think that also demonstrates to our residents the value of our safety committee. Most places don't have a safety committee, but to be able to consider the kinds of things that come up in a committee and then work on it, it's also a place where neighbors, if they have a safety concern, can come and talk out an issue and see what the township can do. That's one thing that's impressed me about the committee, how it does respond to neighbors and offer solutions. So again, thank you very much, and that is all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Bill, that's very, very good.
I just want to comment, this was a safety committee project, but Bill Sheldon did all the work.
Big job.
Yeah.
And supporting township staff.
Thank you again, Bill. We'll go on to the road work. I have a report for this last month. Guide rail at Fire and Rosedale Road was damaged during a hit-and-run. The repair was done by the township road crew using four new posts and two new panels. Just for your information, that cost us approximately five hundred dollars in new material only, but that's something that happens and we have to suck it up. Billings are being hauled out to residents who call and make appointments for the delivery. Seven loads were hauled out to residents this month, and that's a nice product if you have a need for it, and don't be afraid to call for it. Spring cleanup was scheduled for March twenty-three, from eight to twelve coordinating with the Red Plate Valley Association. Spring sweeping of subdivisions is set for the first week in April. Snow plowing posts will be removed at the same time. There was only one tree down on Rosedale Road due to storms this last month. You heard about the boreys that have been done on Marshall Bridge Road, and they will be hopefully available next week?
We have to have them by the end of the week.
Okay. Gilmore Associates are working on the Marshall Bridge Road bank erosion. Again, the cores are to establish what to do with the erosion of the Red Plate Creek. It's coming much too close to Marshall Bridge Road. Kennet Township and neighboring townships are having problems with thefts of inlet The township has had ten grates stolen, each at a cost of over three hundred dollars.
I thought it was more, was it more than that?
That was as of the writing of this, but I believe...
More since there's been...
Yes. And what is it up to now, Roger?
I think it's twenty-two to...
Twenty-two grates.
We have substantial progress now.
And they're the grates that cover the stormwater inlets on the sides of roads. We recovered a bunch of them. Albert, do you have anything to say on this matter?
It's four townships in Southern Enid County, there's about over fifty of them stolen. There's three twenty, I think, who were placed without the labor, and we have made substantial progress. You will be hearing more in the near future.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
I have a lot stolen over there.
It's amazing. Those people go and just...
Smart road. Smart road. I was just a township.
Twenty-something fourteen down Junkyard. Roger had done a brilliant thing in marking our grates with paint. And the ones that were recovered, clearly, among them were several of ours that were clearly ours, so what was happening. Trimming of trees has been done throughout the town.
Mike, may I introduce your producer, Senator Allen? I wanted to say that I thought that our chief and his assistant did an outstanding job for investigating this problem, getting on it as quickly as he did, and the location was down in Delaware, as I recall.
I don't want to go into too much, it wasn't Delaware, yes.
Can we postpone your comments?
It wasn't Delaware, but I don't want to say too much more than that, it might ever...
Wherever it was, we did a very good job.
We will inform you in the future.
Yes.
Well, the other day we had a staff meeting, and our other police officer rode through development down the street, came to the office for the staff meeting, and during the hour of the staff meeting, they went and filled a grate out of development.
And I will say that to the residents.
Yes, twelve o'clock.
We assumed they were being stolen at night or in the very early morning, and we certainly learned that they were taking, they were taking in broad daylight. And interviewing residents, the residents are assuming that they're doing what they should be doing, you know, they appear as contractors or something like that. So it's been a very interesting case.
But some of the developments, they've been able to email me at night, and then I've sent Roger out because the grates are missing, and so he went out and put temporary measures out there.
You don't want to back into one of them? Okay. I got them on the...
Is there no way to lock those down?
We're working on it.
But it's not easy to do.
The ones that were here locked up. Grabbing them in or something. So they slip.
Starting in April, we will begin our spring crack filling and chip sealing program, and that's the end of the monthly report on the votes. Any questions? Okay.
We have three requests for extensions for Rich West until June thirty, Happy until six thirty, and Kate Lumber until five thirty. I move we approve all three extensions.
All those in favor? Aye.
I wanted to just tell everyone that we finally have begun completion of the Penn Stand development. That's been a topic here for quite a while. We are getting the escrow monies right now, and we met with the residents tonight, and we have a completion list, so it looks like we're going to be able to complete everything in there with the escrow money, including eighty-eight ramps that are required now that weren't at the time of the plan. So that will start, we're hoping to go out to bid April first and award the bids in May, and we're hoping to have the project done by the end of August.
That is the end of our formal meeting. Does anybody have any comments? John?
A short comment on the Kennet Bike Way, that's the shoulder widening from Hammerton to south of Mendenhall. Pendott has now told us that it is likely, but not a sure thing, that they will do the construction this summer. They have it on the schedule formally now for next summer, but everything comes together and we hope we could go out with bid in May and start work on it, hopefully finish it before the winter.
Good.
We'll see.
We hope. Been going on for quite a while, and you've been very, very patient. Okay, you have something?
I just got to comment.
It's just a very simple one. I'm Margaret Hiller. Folks here probably know me pretty well. I'm just very excited to let everybody know that my property has just become a certified sustainable landscape. What that means is that I have successfully completed the certification documentation. I am the first resident on the East Coast. I'm the second resident in the world. And the reason I put this forward, and what's most exciting about it, and I've told this to the sites committee, Chester County has always been a leader in many things that we've done. And Mr. Sheldon was up there talking about the GPS thing that we're doing. We've got the first small watershed organizations. We've got a lot of the most proactive environmentalists in regards to protecting resources throughout the state. So this is a resource for everybody in our community. I want anyone who's interested to give me a call to contact and come see my property, because it truly is a demonstration of practices and land practices that are a great model for sustainability. And maybe the opportunity and the hope, consideration, that since Kennet has led in many ways with our resources as well as regionally, that we can look at these practices and see if there's ways to actually improve our ordinances. And I think if the voluntary program standards and guidelines, there might be some opportunity for growth and furtherance of our ordinances with these practices, so...
Thank you, Mart. Congratulations.
Good day.
Congratulations. We're proud to have that in our township. Do you listen? They are. I'm usually a turn. Thank you, Bill. Good luck.